Brownfield expenses and all that. Can you share this?
I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is a special meeting of the Marquette City Commission, September 8, 2014. Would everyone please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the true republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Your Honor. Commissioner Kim Benzey.
Here.
Commissioner Campana.
Here.
Commissioner Coyne.
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
Mayor Protem Stonehouse.
Here.
And Mayor Neme.
Here. Thank you, City Clerk. Are there any changes to the agenda? I guess we do have one minor change. Right after announcements, we will have a general citizen comment period. Members who want to speak on the item of the memorandum of understanding between Duke LifePoint and the city of Marquette need not come up and reserve time. We will have an open comment at that agenda item, so you don't have to reserve time. It's if you want to talk on some extraneous subject, you're welcome to join the citizen comment that we'll add in after announcements. Commissioners, is there approval for the agenda? Commissioner Ryan?
I move the agenda be approved as amended.
Thank you. Second, Commissioner Kim Benzey.
Support.
It's been moved by Commissioner Ryan, seconded by Commissioner Kim Benzey, to approve the agenda as amended. All Commissioners in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed, say no. The motion passes unanimously. I have no announcements, so we'll move directly to the consent agenda. Public comment. Anyone desiring to address the city commission public comment? It'll be limited to three minutes per person. State your name and physical address. Anyone desire to address us during the public comment?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners and others present, my name is Tony Rotaski. I live at 936 Wilson, about 400 yards from the proposed hospital site. I certainly support and approve, and hopefully you will, the memorandum of understanding. But I want to also mention that my title is Executive Director of the Upper Peninsula Construction Council. We're engaged in many different facets of economic activity and economic development, and we see this as a positive for our community. It's certainly a positive for health care in the Upper Peninsula and the jobs that it'll create. And just a little bit selfish, the construction jobs that this will create, we're certainly hopeful that you'll support this memorandum of understanding. And I guess with that, I'll be brief and urge the commission to support the memorandum of understanding. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rotaski.
Commissioners, Mayor, my name is Tom Hogan. I've got over 66 years.
Address, sir.
517 Bearga Avenue, two blocks west. I have over 60 years on Bearga Avenue. Been on Bearga Avenue before the bypass was put in, when the orphanage was still working before 7th Street and McLowan, and I've seen many changes. Seen us put a dump there up the west end, and it worked, and we let it work. I think the hospital has selected an outstanding site. I remember that site when it was all rail cars. There was a cement plant there. As a kid, I used to come home after being knee-deep in the stuff they pumped out, and we now have Snowberry. I think the hospital would be outstanding at that site. And as a former commissioner, I know your tax base. You don't have a lot of land out there where you can put stuff, and I encourage you to support this and keep the tax base thriving in Marquette. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan. Anyone else willing to address the commission?
Craig Kosha, 1046 Alway, neurosurgeon, Marquette General. Been practicing for 22 years, and what I like to speak in favor of most is endorsing a new facility. Regardless of the site, I'll leave that to the experts between the city and the institution. But as health care evolves, our facility has reached its end of its useful life, and most of the people in this room have received services in the institution. And as we move forward to meet the demands of the coming health environment and the need for coordinated, efficient care and team multidisciplinary care, our current facility doesn't meet those needs. And we have an opportunity with a capital infusion from the Duke LifePoint organization to create a state-of-the-art facility that will allow us to provide that level of quality care. And again, along the lines of other comments, get to expand the catchment area of our programs and bring more jobs, opportunities to the region.
Thank you, Mr. Kosha.
Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, my name is Dan Mizuki. I live at 409 East Ohio Street in Marquette. I'm here to speak as forcefully as I can in support of this. I'm an old guy, and I have the fondest possible memories of Marquette medicine in the past at a Marquette General Hospital, and I'll never give them up. But I have even more hope for the future, and the future is what this is all about. I want to say please do support this. I want to thank you, everyone who's been involved in these negotiations, for bringing us this far. This is what will assure the future of Marquette medicine in the city of Marquette, and for that, I'm deeply grateful.
Thank you, Mr. Mizuki. I just want to take a moment to remind people that during the agenda item, we will entertain public comments, so we don't all have to come up now unless you're on a schedule and you need to bow out before that. Mr. Clerk?
My name is Bill Short, 7 Northwood Lane. I'm a physician, a family physician at Marquette General. I am on the hospital board, and I oversee the education of our physicians at Marquette General. Right now, we have over 42 in training at the hospital, and I just want to speak in strong favor as well for the proposed new hospital facility to be built at the Roundhouse site. We've trained over 400 physicians at Marquette General over the history of 40 years that Dr. Mizuki led, and of that 400 physicians, we now have about 120 that are practicing in the U.P. And I'm just so excited when thinking about this new facility and what it's going to mean for health education and health care, but my focus right now is on the education piece. That is just so exciting to be able to draw young physicians in training here to a state-of-the-art facility, to be able to do their training, and many want to stay afterwards, not just here in Marquette or Marquette County, but across the whole U.P. And that's just a great thing that we have going, and I just want to support what we're here for right now and look forward to seeing how this goes. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Short.
Commissioners, I'm Dr. Dan Arnold. I practiced medicine here at Marquette General since 1979. I retired three years ago, and I'm currently Chair of the Board of the Spear Health Foundation. Want to express our appreciation to all the commissioners involved in negotiating this memorandum of understanding so that we can finally move ahead on what was, after all, the entire purpose of the sale of Marquette General to Duke LifePoint, which is the creation of an ultra-up-to-date and completely modern new health care facility for tertiary care in the Upper Peninsula. The mission of the foundation is to the health and well-being of all the inhabitants of the Upper Peninsula, and I see proceeding with this new facility as moving forward in that regard, and I would urge your support. Thank you.
Again, I'd like to repeat that we will entertain public comment during the agenda item, and this comment is just delaying us moving forward on the agenda. But I don't want to coerce people to not comment publicly.
Mayor and city commission, in the effort of time, I will, I'd like to just support all the prior statements and encourage the commission to approve moving forward on this. It's imperative to this community, the city of Marquette, as well as the U.P. Thank you very much.
Name and address.
Brian Kerrigan, 824 High Street, Marquette.
Okay, I assume no one else wants to comment during this section. So we'll close this comment section, and we will proceed with the agenda. Commissioners, what is your pleasure with the consent agenda? We have the minutes of the September 8 regular meeting.
Move approval, Your Honor.
Commissioner Ryan?
Yes.
Support, second. Commissioner Campana. It's been moved by Commissioner Brian, seconded by Commissioner Campana, to approve the consent agenda, the meetings, minutes of September 8 regular commission meeting. All in favor, say yes.
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 Anyone opposed, say no. The motion passes unanimously. We're now on to the new business section of the agenda, and the second item is memorandum of understanding between Duke LifePoint and the city of Marquette for location of a replacement hospital. City Clerk, do you have a background item to read, please?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. A city commission subcommittee and city administrative officials have been working cooperatively with Duke LifePoint officials, as well as other regional and state organizations, to identify proper property locations that would provide economic and intrinsic value to the city of Marquette as a whole, economic development incentives, and address items of mutual interest that provide a joint benefit to both the city and DLP. As a result of these discussions, DLP is seeking to build a replacement hospital located on the former Roundhouse property, as well as parcel currently used for the municipal service center facility as proposed in the attached MOU. Fiscal effect, the MOU is an extension of good faith to negotiate and reach binding agreements on matters discussed therein, and is not a contract or otherwise legally binding document. Projected future fiscal effect is subject to negotiation as per the attached MOU. Recommendation, approve the memorandum of understanding, direct the mayor to sign it on behalf of the city, and direct the city manager to complete negotiations for an agreement with DLP. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. I suppose what we should do is, Commissioner Ryan?
Your Honor, I move we suspend the rules for further discussion.
Is there a second? Commissioner Reynolds? It's been moved by Commissioner Ryan, seconded by Commissioner Reynolds. Suspend the rules. All Commissioners in favor, say yes.
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 Anyone opposed, say no. The motion passes unanimously. The rules are suspended. And I'd like to call on Commissioner Ryan as a representative of the commission subcommittee to make some brief remarks.
First of all, I'd like to make it clear that countless hours went into this project, but even though our committee of Mayor Neme and Commissioner Kim Benzey and I spent some of those hours, a tremendous number of those hours were devoted by the city manager and his staff, well beyond what we were involved with. And if anyone thinks that this is just one of those situations where Duke LifePoint sat down and said, "Let's pick that site," I can tell you, it didn't work that way. There was a tremendous amount of discussion back and forth. But I can also tell you that as far as this committee goes, and the committee working on it, and I believe the entire commission, there were some hallmark principles that we felt had to be addressed. And number one, we felt it was of paramount importance to the citizens of Marquette that the new hospital be located within the city. I know most residents have always looked at Marquette General as their hospital. They believe it's their hospital. The community and the city have supported it in countless ways, and they have felt it was very important that it continue to be within the boundaries of the city. And of course, that was certainly one of our objectives. Second, by reaching an agreement, we wanted to go forward to ensure that we would continue to have the highest level of health care services available to our residents, as well as those in surrounding communities. And Duke LifePoint Healthcare has announced their intention to build a state-of-the-art facility that will continue to attract outstanding medical professionals who will provide that care. So that was an important consideration for us. Third, with this agreement, we've ensured that the city of Marquette will continue to be the regional health care center of the Upper Peninsula and beyond. This ensures a continuation and expansion of the number of people who will travel here to receive health care services, which will provide a major economic benefit for our community. And fourth, this specific, unique location will include a direct connection between the new hospital and the downtown, which will provide a significant economic boost for that part of our city. And people say, "Why is that important?" You know, this is a great, great community. This is the largest city, not just in the Upper Peninsula, but in northern Michigan, and it has so much to offer. We have Lake Superior, we have bike paths, we have hiking trails, we have museums, we have art, we have many wonderful things, and one of the great things we have is the downtown. That brings a lot of people to this community, and this will only enhance that downtown area and the entire business community. So that was a major consideration as we went forward. This has received so much publicity that, you know, for me to go over all the details probably doesn't make a lot of sense, so I won't accept to say that, you know, from the city's perspective, this provided an opportunity for us to move ahead with a parcel in our community which was not developed, which had some environmental issues, which has been on the block for sale for some time, and to finally move that to a stage where it can be developed. And so that was an important consideration with Duke LifePoint making their commitment, and I'll let them speak more about that. The city also will, of course, receive $4 million in payment for the land to be acquired. And just so people know, the agreement also includes assurances, because there is a TIF involved here, that the city's interests will be protected if, for some reason, LifePoint would choose to sell this facility to a nonprofit organization, for example. We don't see that happening in the near future, but the community is protected in case something like that happens. This agreement also provides for the settlement of a Michigan tax tribunal case concerning the Marquette General Hospital, the existing hospital, on terms that we believe are favorable to the community. For 2013, 14, and 15, this removes the uncertainty which was kind of hanging over us for any of the taxes to be paid. It will result in the restoration of approximately $500,000 for that period, and in those years, those combined three years, the city's general fund alone will receive more than $2 million for those combined taxable years. Other taxing entities will also benefit similarly. So this agreement is important. It also reduces the legal expense that would have been required to take this all the way through the tax tribunal. As you know, approximately 37 acres are involved. Duke LifePoint will receive that. They'll receive the city's full support in setting up a brownfield project, a 12-year tax abatement, several road improvement projects, including the realignment of Bearga Avenue to tie into Spring Street, upgrades and improvements to improve traffic flows on 7th Street, construction of a roundabout or signalized entrance to the new hospital from the US-41M28 bypass, and construction of a new bridge spanning US-41, eliminating the 7th Street-Grove Street intersection. More details are available on any of these projects. While I've listed those projects as something that is a benefit to the new hospital, we believe they'll also provide benefit for the city by improving traffic safety and traffic flow. As just one example, under this plan, the present intersection at 7th Street-Grove Street and US-41M28 will be eliminated. This has been a very dangerous intersection. There have been serious accidents there, and we believe the new plan that's been developed will provide much better traffic flow. We also see some benefits, actually, in replacing the existing municipal service center. While the planning for that is still ongoing, you know, until you actually have a deal, you don't go into extensive planning, we think there are some better ways to do what we're doing, and we'll look for grants and we'll look for ways to do that more efficiently. And I'll just add one more thing, that, you know, one of the keys to this is the establishment of a brownfield TIF. The city will work very hard to make that happen. The TIF will be able to be used to hopefully replace the municipal service center, to provide for many of the road projects, and also for Duke LifePoint to deal with the environmental issues on the site. For those not familiar with the brownfield TIF, it really means the amount of tax revenue that will come to the city of Marquette will more than double because of the fact that the school funds will be coming to the city. And this is a great deal because the school doesn't suffer. What really happens is the money the state would receive to fund the school district will come back to the city. So this is a very important part of this project as well. Just one final comment, as has been pointed out, this is not a final contract. This is the first step in the process. There have to be additional discussions and negotiations. But again, I want to point out that Manager Vida, certainly Chief Financial Officer Simpson, Dennis Stackowitz, our Director of Planning and Development, had countless, countless hundreds of hours into this project, and we would not be here without that effort, and we're pleased to be at this point. That's our recommendation to the commission that this be approved.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. What I'll do now is I'll allow Duke LifePoint to address us. We have four gentlemen from Duke LifePoint here. To my right, I'll introduce you all. To my right would be the west end of the table, because I don't know whose left or right it might be in the view. Ed Banus, the CEO of the Marquette General Duke LifePoint, the local hospital. Then we have Jeff Seraphin, which is the President of the Eastern Group of LifePoint Hospitals. And heading east, we have Steve Embry, which is the CFO of the Marquette General Duke LifePoint Hospital, the local hospital. And Thomas H. Butler, who is the Chief Financial Officer of the Eastern Group of LifePoint Hospitals. So welcome, gentlemen. We're pleased to have you here. And Mr. Seraphin, if you'd like to address us.
Thank you, Mayor Neme and City Commission. I appreciate the opportunity to come speak to you today. And I first like to thank you for the opportunity for this partnership and for your commitment to Marquette General and the well-being of everyone in this community. It has been evident throughout the commitment that this team, everyone from the commission to Manager Vida and your team, has been just a great group of people to work with on a common vision for how we can make a difference in this community together. Duke LifePoint has been honored to be a part of the Marquette community for the last two years, Marquette General for decades. Together, we've been able to make great strides in establishing Marquette General as a regional center of medical excellence and innovation, and expanding the health care services here to meet the changing needs of the community. There are so many developments and milestones that we're proud of, the new quality care and patient safety programs that we have collaborated to advance. Marquette General joined the Duke Heart Network and will soon become an affiliate of the Duke Cancer Network, which is another Duke tertiary care area recognized worldwide for excellence. The recent addition of the lifesaving helicopter air ambulance in the Upper Peninsula. The new physicians we've recruited, including 20 new specialists to the Upper Peninsula, the addition of Bell Hospital and Portage Health to our U.P. family, which will assist us in establishing a true regional system of care. The construction of a new Marquette General Hospital and medical office building is a significant building block in our plans for the future. As you all know, the idea of a new hospital has been in the works for some time, and we hope to break ground on this new facility in 2015 and open it for services by the end of 2017. We will invest approximately $280 million in this new medical campus, which will include a new state-of-the-art hospital that will accommodate approximately 279 beds and approximately 80,000 square feet of modern medical office building. For about a year, we have evaluated potential sites for this new hospital and a medical office complex. Our goal has been to find a location that would be easily accessible to patients, employees, and partners to help Marquette General future contribute to the growth and expansion of the city of Marquette. We believe that the Roundhouse property fits this bill perfectly. The 37-acre property situated close to downtown and just one mile from northern Michigan University, a very important partner at Marquette General. The site will offer easy access to Marquette General from various main and secondary roads and enhance collaboration between the hospital and northern Michigan. We're excited about this site because of its close proximity to downtown and the many community amenities. The new hospital campus will reinforce and continue the positive momentum in the downtown area, creating economic benefits for the community. Because of its history as an industrial site, we're confident that the redevelopment of this land as a location for a new hospital campus will offer many major benefits to the Marquette community and add to the ongoing revitalization of the downtown area. City of Marquette has already sustained success in converting brownfield properties to community treasures, and we look forward to being a part of this next milestone in the history of this great city. Locating the new hospital campus on this site will help us fulfill our commitment to ensure access to high-quality health care for this community and the surrounding region. We're thankful for the city commission's continued support for Marquette General. We appreciate your consideration of this proposal to buy this land and for your willingness to partner with us to make the Roundhouse property the new home for Marquette General. We're excited for the opportunities ahead for us to further advance medical services in this city and contribute to Marquette's continued growth and prosperity. Thank you all for this great opportunity. We are very excited about the future of Marquette General and the future of Marquette. Thank you, and we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Seraphin. City Manager Vida, do you have anything you wanted to add before we entertain public comment?
Thank you, sir. Only, it's been a pleasure working with the Duke LifePoint team. I know for many, there have been questions swirling around for the past 18 months about exactly what the plans were going to be moving forward, and it's unfortunate, but of course, deliberations, there's not a lot we can share. I can only say, sir, that we're extremely grateful for the leadership that the subcommittee demonstrated during these discussions. We're extremely grateful to all of the time and energy that the Duke LifePoint team put in, all of the folks that were there, working nights and weekends to help make this come to fruition. We're grateful also that we get to finally share it with the full community and that we have a full house here this evening, and I'm sure a lot of people watching from home looking to hear a lot more about where this is going to lead. But only thankful that we're going to get an opportunity to have a full hearing tonight, and hopefully we'll reach the right conclusion for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. With that, I'll open up to public comment again. Anyone who desires to comment, please come forward. State your name and address, please.
Jerry Corkin, County Board Chairman. Just like to commend the city and Duke LifePoint to come to this agreement. It's a great investment in your city and in Marquette County, so Board of Commissioners is very happy. One thing that I think is important, this hospital serves mostly U.Pers, people from around the 15 counties, so when it comes time to build it, I hope that we use local labor and people to build it. So good luck with it. Good job on behalf of the commission.
Thank you, Chairman Corkin.
Good afternoon. Yurmalankin in 8 Marquette Drive. I've always said it needed to be in Marquette. I've been a builder in our community for 39 years. I've had a pleasure building homes for some of the physicians at the hospital. When it came to time for people to kind of guess and wonder where it may or may not be located, my theory always was, to build a hospital, you cannot build it with a septic system or a well system. It had to be in the city of Marquette. You needed infrastructure, city infrastructure, and I'm glad my hunch was correct, and I'm glad that this facility is going to be in the city of Marquette, and it will be beneficial for all the people in our area and the surrounding areas as well. I've been a member of the Home Builders Association for the past 30-some-odd years, 39 years, and so I suspect some of the home builders will be real pleased to build some of the homes in the future for the people upcoming. Again, thank you for the diligent work that you have done as a commission, and as I said a long time ago, there always is an incredible amount of back-room negotiation, and job well done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Langman.
Fritz Erickson, 1440 Center Street here in Marquette. As many of you know, I serve as the President of Northern Michigan University. Northern Michigan University has enjoyed many great partnerships with Marquette General Hospital and the city of Marquette. We couldn't be happier than the location that they've chosen. While we've enjoyed them being right next door to us, just a mile down the road, we see wonderful partnerships continuing and wonderful new partnerships developing because of this type of new facility. I'd like to congratulate the city manager and the committee for all of the work that they've done on this, and we look forward to our continued partnership. Thank you.
Thank you, President Erickson.
I'm Mona Lang, Director, Executive Director for the Marquette Downtown Development Authority, and I know I speak for my Board of Directors in thanking the commission, thanking Duke LifePoint for all the negotiations. We are thrilled with the site location. It's only going to enhance not only our quality of life as a city. We have our lake, we have our historic downtown, we have our university, and we have our hospital. And it certainly makes us stand out not only in the Upper Peninsula, but in the region, in the country. And it is really exciting today to stand here, and I'm just really pleased, and I think that we're going to see a lot of economic development. think that we're going to see a lot of economic development. And so, once again, thank you, and we look forward to working with whoever we can to help move on the process.
Thank you, Ms. Lang.
Good afternoon. Amy Clickner with the Lakes Period Community Partnership, 501 South Front Street. I just want to say congratulations to the city and especially the committee under Don's leadership and to Duke LifePoint. Well, they're like family now they've been here. A $280 million investment in the city, as I told Mr. Seraphin and Mr. Banos earlier, is a dream in economic development, to have those kind of numbers thrown around. And as Mana just said, it just begets more and more economic development. So, we are very excited for the incredible work that you've done, for you to have the faith in the Marquette community to consider doing an expansion like this, and then as we look forward to the old site and what great things and opportunities may come from that. Again, just congratulations, and we're just really pleased that you're here to make this announcement today.
Thank you, Ms. Clickner.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Tom Veer. I own Donkers, 137 West Washington. I live at 431 East Ridge. I want to thank the Commission very much. I've been working on this for two years along with yourselves, and I think it's a great location. I've been very, very impressed by what's been happening. It's much closer to my business, we're delivering chocolates to Ed Banos over there. I've done that many, many times. I've been working really hard on this one for a long time, so I really want to see the Commission carry this forward and make sure that the whole community benefits, and especially around the actual hospital itself, the current residents and whatnot, make sure that everybody's taken care of through this. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Veer.
David Martin. I live at 40 North Seast Drive in Gwin. I'm also the owner of the Window Store located on Washington Street. We own six lots from the corner of 7th Street extending west. I know in the last few years, in the area, we've heard a lot about, "We don't want it in our backyard." But I'm here to urge the Commission to vote yes on this project because I would like to see the hospital built in my backyard. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Anyone else wishing to address the Commission?
Hi. Tom Turville, 380 Meske, Marquette. Pure and simple, this is a positive move forward for the city of Marquette, its people and its taxpayers, and I encourage you to follow it through. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turville.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me all? Yeah, this is Matthew Songer. You probably all know me. I just have a couple of words.
Your address, please.
Oh, 2645 West Grove, Marquette. Just to address the City Commission. As you may know, I founded several businesses in Marquette, and I'm proud to say I do it. I had put one goal in mind when I started Pioneer Surgical, and that was to create jobs for Marquette. The reason I did that was because Marquette was a town that I saw had potential for dying out because of lack of growth of new business, and without a new business, town kind of dies. And for every dollar that comes in the community, there's a multiplier effect of five. It's a business principle. There's a multiplier effect of five. So, you bring a million dollars in, it effectively creates 5 million. On the other hand, the dollar goes out, you take 5 million out. So, why is this pertinent today? Well, the pertinent today is that I've struggled, and it is from a businessman's point of view, it has been a difficult place in Marquette to do business. Now, I'm very happy to say that I have met this City Manager, and the current administration appears to be changing that. It appears to be more of a business-friendly environment. Businesses can elect to go wherever they choose, and it's not a privilege. It's something that we have to do to lure them in because this is a better place to do business. And when I see Marquette, it has five real pillars. Healthcare is one of the pillars, and I think this is critical for to get the hospital. There's going to be a lot of nasity, there's going to be a lot of what I would call background noise. And I would say that what you need to do is look for not just your own responsibilities and your own interests, but look for interests of your children and your grandchildren because this will have a long-term impact in this community. Not just this hospital, but what else I have to say. I'd see this community as five pillars. One is healthcare. It's clearly you're going to discuss tonight. Second is the mining industry. And it appears that you've done a good job to get the trucks through the town. I think out every day I see those trucks because that means business coming into the community. Mining is a critical role in the UP, and it has been for 100 years. Third is education. Of course, the university brings a lot of value to this community. And finally, what's related to that is the Smart Zone. What the City Commission needs to take up at some point in time is, and I realize this is not for tonight, but to bring on, there was a lot of talk about bringing a Smart Zone because what we need to do is we need to be an incubator for businesses, spin-off from the university. And some of that can be dealt in with the hospital as well. But Marquette right now exports one thing very well, our children. My children are gone. In fact, most of you would probably say that your children have graduated and gone somewhere else. I want Marquette to be a place where children can stay and can work, and that's what I've kind of dedicated my life in these businesses to. And I think this hospital will do a lot to do that and bring business into the community. Certainly, if it doesn't upgrade, if it doesn't do it, business will go elsewhere, as do patients. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Songer.
Thank you, City Commissioner Pete Mackin, PO Box 904, Marquette, resident of Chocley Township. And I serve on Marquette County's Planning Commission, although I'm not representing them officially here tonight. Many of our meetings have focused on the 41 corridor, the traffic flow patterns through 41 corridor. As you cited earlier, there are many issues with that corridor as far as accidents and smooth traffic flow. So, I want to thank the City Commission for addressing that in addition to this wonderful opportunity to have Duke LifePoint stay in the city of Marquette. You know, it is a major topic in all of the planning commissions that have this 41 corridor to go through, and I just want to thank the efforts that you guys included, that very important issue in the relocation of the 41 corridor. Thank you for your efforts.
Thank you, Mr. Mackin.
Thank you. John Pietro, City of Marquette, 1803 Prescott Hill. One of the things that, after listening to everybody kind of make their comments, I think Rochester has their mails, University of Michigan has their hospital, and Duke LifePoint is going to bring a 22nd-century hospital into the community. But this is going to be a win-win situation for everybody, not just Marquette, Marquette County, the UP, but Northern Michigan. And you'll see many people from Wisconsin even coming into the city to get treated for their medical issues. So, I think that everybody is very fortunate that lives in the UP to have Duke LifePoint coming into the city of Marquette, beautiful location. And wanted to thank everybody involved with the hundreds of hours with negotiations. I know it's not final, but at least you can see that each party's got each other on the radar, and this is very important. So, anyways, just want to thank everybody, but like I say, this is a win-win situation for everybody in the UP, Northern Michigan, Wisconsin, and even reaching farther out once that the people get to learn and be educated, how Duke LifePoint will be able to treat many, many different medical issues. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Pietro. Anyone else wanting to address the City Commission? Anyone else desiring to address the Commission? There's no other citizens wishing to address us. Fellow Commissioners, we close that public comment portion of this item. It was your pleasure.
Well, I would make a motion, we approve the recommendation and move forward on this project, approving the MOU and authorizing the City Manager to continue to implement the project as stated by the Clerk.
Commissioner Coyne. Thank you. It's been moved by Commissioner Ryan, seconded by Commissioner Coyne to approve the memorandum of understanding between Duke LifePoint and the city of Marquette for the location of a replacement hospital. Direct the mayor and city clerk to sign the document on behalf of the city and direct the City Manager to facilitate the further documents to implement this process. Commissioner Ryan, anything further on this item?
No, I spoke extensively at the beginning, so I won't say anymore at this point. But again, you know, as many people have said, sitting here in the audience, this is a very big step forward for the city of Marquette. And I think of the, I think that in the six years I've been here, almost six years, you know, we've made some important decisions, but none are more far-reaching than this one as far as the future of our city goes.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Commissioner Coyne?
Well, thank you, Your Honor. I want to thank the people who came today, both those who spoke and didn't. I appreciate their remarks. I would join, if you notice, there was a group of physicians who are still practicing, and then there's a whole bunch of old geezers that aren't practicing anymore, and I fall into the old geezer part. And I just wanted to say, this is the second time I've been through this. I was the chief of staff of both St. Mary's and St. Luke's in 1972 when they merged. And if you think this was difficult, that was really difficult because, you know, one was on one side of the town and the other side of the town, and there were doctors that were loyal to one and the other, and it was very difficult. But it had to happen, and Marquette General was formed. And in forming Marquette General, the medical care in the Upper Peninsula took a giant leap forward, as you can all attest if you've ever been sick. And not to be flippant, but if you've ever been sick and come to Marquette General, you get quality, first-class care. In 1972, if you went to the emergency room, you weren't sure whether a psychiatrist or a dermatologist was going to take care of your heart attack. And I don't, I'll even include myself in that. I really had worries that this is not really quality of care when the psychiatrist is pounding on my chest, and you had to tell him where the chest was. So, things have really, really changed. So, why I bring that up is that that was 42 years ago, and the comment by Dr. Kosha was made, it's out of date. It seems like a beautiful institution, and they have done wonderful things in terms of the equipment and the quality of care and the kind of people doing it. But it's, if you've ever worked there, I worked there for 40 years, and I would, I know you're going to say that I'm just getting old. I would get lost sometimes trying to find the OB ward because they kept moving it. And then if I was a patient, can you imagine if I was a patient from Felch and I had to navigate my way through healthcare through Marquette General Hospital system? It's very difficult. And what I'm saying is that it's now 2014. I think it's time for another huge advance, and I think this represents that huge advance. And I think, I would just comment, when this initially started, I removed myself from the negotiating because I served on the board of the Superior Health Foundation, which had monitoring responsibilities. So, I really was between a rock and a hard place. But initially, I observed this Commission saying to the manager, "We want this to stay in Marquette." And the diligence that his team did was phenomenal. I happened to observe the firm, two firms that Duke LifePoint hired to do diligence to figure this out, and they were meticulous, very careful. And the thing that impressed me the most, what they said, was, "We want facts, not promises." And these folks have done this for Duke LifePoint a lot, and they get lots of promises, blah, 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 and then nothing happens. So, I watched, and the facts were instantly prepared by our team, and I think that really is responsible for the city and Duke LifePoint being able to come to this, what I think is an excellent decision. And I think they recognize the excellent facilities that the city offers. And I applaud the committee. I just got off a committee working on the mining thing forever, and that was very difficult. And I think this is probably magnified difficulty by 10. So, you guys did a super job, and I certainly will support the motions strongly, and am very happy to have this occur. And that's coming from an old geezer who did this in 1972, and I really see this as an equal giant step forward. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Coyne. Any other Commissioners? Commissioner Ken Benzey?
Thank you. I too would just like to say a few brief remarks. I think Don did a good job. We put him back to work, taking advantage of his public relations career with Cliff. So, thank you, Don. You did a great job laying everything out. I'd also like to thank our City Manager for leading us through this, along with Gary Simpson, Director of Finance, and Dennis Dackowitz, Director of Community Development. Whenever we had questions, and we did ask each other the tough questions, they came back with facts, they came back with answers, and we were never disappointed. If there's anything we didn't understand, they walked us through it to make sure that we were very comfortable with the MOU before we came to the full Commission. And lastly, I'd like to thank the negotiating team of Duke LifePoint for your patience with us whenever we needed time to study issues more or kind of get our ducks in a row. You gave us that. Thank you. And just a quick thanks to my fellow Commissioners that served on the committee, Don Ryan and Bob Neme. I think that when you have a negotiating team, it's important that everyone gets to say and speak their piece about what they feel. I certainly was allowed to do that. I think we all got to ask each other some tough questions, but we came together in the end, and I think it was a great committee. So, thank you for your hard work.
Thank you, Commissioner Ken Benzey. Any other Commissioners? Mayor Pro-Tam Stonehouse?
Couple of things struck me during the public comment, and I think they really speak volumes, not only of the folks who said them, but also of really what the greater meaning is. Certainly, Dr. Songer, when he made the comment, "This is what's best for our children and their grandchildren." And I think we all need to keep that in focus as to what's really happening and why. The second one was by Dr. Mizuki, of course, who said, "The future is what this is all about," and that really is the truth. It's the future not only for medical care, it's the future for financial sources of stability for the city, it's the future for downtown, it's the future for medical education in the Upper Peninsula, as well as in Marquette. Everything is wrapped in, I think, to those two comments, and we really need to keep that in mind. A corollary to that would be that I would suggest that this is probably the most important economic development in the city of Marquette in a century. And we can measure that in a variety of ways, and certainly the test of time will tell. But right now, I think it clearly is the most important economic development event in the city of Marquette in a century. So, that is critically important to all of us. And I, again, would echo my thanks to everybody involved, our committee, our general commission, certainly the good folks from Duke LifePoint. And I would just wrap up with the single comment, that when the Commission heard that Duke was potentially looking at other sites outside of the city, its number-one goal, our goal, we assigned ourselves, the goal that literally every citizen in this town gave us, was keep the hospital in the city. That was priority number one. And I think all of us, especially our committee and our city manager and management team, have done a remarkable job of taking that first critical step. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Stonehouse. Commissioner Campana?
I'd like to thank the members of Duke Life Point for coming here. Good to see you. The last phone call I got just before I came here tonight was a citizen who was not in favor of this agreement, and so all of a sudden I'm having these thoughts. But today, it was nothing, I've, every single comment was positive. So, that tells me that people are for this, and I assumed it would be. So, I think this is a good thing. You know, I'm totally happy to see it happen. It's a needed hospital. Dr. Kosha says it's reached its endpoint. He should know, I would hope, and I think this will probably be a good thing. This is going to bring plenty of jobs to the area. I see a lot of people working. I hope we use the local help. I hope it's union. I hope we see this. This is going to be good, not just for Marquette, but for the townships and the whole UP and Northern Wisconsin. So, this, Marquette, this is going to be a great thing for the area. Lastly, it may be a small thing, but I hate that intersection of Seventh Street, Grove Street, and the bypass. Just hate it. At night, it's impossible. There's been too many accidents, and I'm really glad to see us address that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Campana. Commissioner Reynolds?
My only comments are, obviously, the room has spoke and pretty much took all my comments, but very excited about the possibility of the downtown continuing to expand, and I think this is a great location for that. Also, just wanted to thank the subcommittee for what they've done. But also, this is the most positive meeting that I've ever been in, and it's exciting. So, that is just feels good inside. So, you guys done a great job, and I'm just excited. That is all.
Thank you, Commissioner Reynolds. Commissioner Ryan?
I just wanted to add, as we passed out our kudos, we should have included City Attorney Ron Keefe, who also has played an important part, especially as we got down to the wire and in the negotiations, going back and forth with attorneys from the other side, and that's a game they play all by themselves. But Ron was very much involved in this process too, and should certainly be acknowledged that we could not have, not got to this point without his support and effort.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Any other comments by fellow commissioners?
Well, I guess it's my turn. I'll finish off the comments. I thank the gentlemen from Duke Life Point for being here. Certainly, this has been a long road. There's been a lot of speculation. I think it's probably the most off-question I've gotten from citizens, you know, where's the hospital going to go? And tell them, "We're trying our best, we're planning to have it here, but we don't know yet, and so today, now we do know," and I appreciate that. Commissioner Coyne mentioned the Truck Route Subcommittee, which he served on, and that committee did have a long and arduous process, and I must confess that. I think our, our Subcommittee had a little easier point. Staff did, did everything, the city manager, the city attorney. Dennis Stackowitz, certainly, I think he's probably lived hospital for the last six months, day and night, and afternoons and evenings. And at the end, CFO Simpson had, he not only had the budget to get out, he had schedules to work on for the Duke Life Point question, and he also had schedules to work on for the Smart Zone. And I guess that's a good segue into the Smart Zone. For Dr. Songer, we will be acting on the Smart Zone this evening, the next step. And I think that's, not only is it exciting to have a huge project coming, coming into our downtown, but it'll just be a good adjunct to our Smart Zone, our next Michigan zone. The opportunities that we're facing are boundless, and you can't enunciate them, but I know that any time you have many, many opportunities, they start building on themselves, and good things happen. And a hospital of this magnitude, this project in our downtown, is certainly going to be a capstone for the downtown. We, we have a nice project in Liberty Way, we've got a, just a treasure of a downtown. Thanks to the DDA and the many merchants who have, who've had the confidence in it. But this will be a nice continuation onto the new, larger Marquette downtown, I suppose. And we're really pleased to have this here, so.
Any further comments by any commissioners? City manager, any final comments?
Thank you, Your Honor. Only just an administrative one, just to remind the commission that there will be a press conference in the community, there will be a press conference after this meeting that'll be conducted here in city chambers. And so, if we haven't scratched your itch, I know DLP has been very gracious in visiting us this evening. They'll be sticking around a little bit afterwards. That'll afford anybody in chambers or anybody who might be watching and rushing, thinking of rushing down, an opportunity to chat with them firsthand and talk about their vision for the future.
Thank you, city manager. Well, let's get back to business. We're, we're ready for the question. It's been moved by Commissioner Ryan, seconded by Commissioner Coyne, to approve the memorandum of understanding, direct the mayor to sign it on behalf of the city, and direct the city manager to complete negotiations for an agreement with Duke Life Point Hospitals. All in favor of the motion, please say yes.
Yes.
Anyone who's opposed in motion, please say no. The motion is passed unanimously. I guess the next is comments by the commission, if we haven't commented enough already. I don't see anyone. Any last comments? Commissioner, Mayor Protem Stonehouse?
If, one last comment, I think is semi-certainly connected to it. You know, number one question was where the hospital was going, that people were asking me. The number two question was what happens to the old hospital? And I think that as, as we move forward with this, that needs to be in our radar screen as to how that property is disposed of. In Marquette, we are very sensitive because we have the old orphanage and the debacle that's happened with that. So, I think everybody is a little goosey with the old hospital structure and how that would either be repurposed or used. So, we need to, we need to keep our focus on that. But other than that, thank you. Nothing further.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Stonehouse. Any other comments by commissioners? Okay. Comments from the city manager? Any other comments from staff? Well, that were adjourned.
Careful, you have a little quiet in the room. Thank you. Well, I just want to say that this is really a historic day in Marquette. Tonight, the Marquette City Commission took action to approve the memorandum of understanding with Duke Life Point Healthcare for the future site for the new Marquette General Hospital. We're very pleased that that decision was made. As I mentioned at the meeting, the initiatives that we undertook as a, as a city commission and as a committee working on this project, number one, were to keep the hospital in the city of Marquette. That's been very important to us. We think it's very important to the citizens of Marquette. They view this as their hospital, and certainly it serves a much broader area than this, but the city has supported it for many years, and it's very important to us that it's going to be here in the future. We think it's also important that this will ensure that we will continue to have the highest level of healthcare available here, based on the commitment that Duke Life Point has made for the future. Third, we, with this agreement, you know, it will continue, Marquette will continue to be the medical center of the UP. We will continue to draw people from not just around the Upper Peninsula, but even beyond, to this new facility, which will be developed here. And fourth, this specific location near the downtown area will really do a tremendous job of enhancing the downtown and, and really will be a major step going forward for the city of Marquette. Those are just some opening comments. I don't know if Jeff wants to say something to start, and then we'll just kind of open it up to questions.
I'll just be very quick. I just want to echo how excited we are about the selection, finally getting to this point, but more importantly, just how excited we are about the future of healthcare in the Upper Peninsula. We understand what Marquette General has meant to the city of Marquette for years, and it is thrilling to be a part of charting a course for this next chapter in the city of Marquette. We could not be happier about today. So, thank you for the opportunity to be here. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Pretty much an open format. Go ahead.
One that comes to my mind, Mr. Seraphin Ordon, not sure which one of you I should direct this to, but if I remember the memorandum of understanding correctly, I think it meant was dated August 29th. About when was it that your two sides pretty much decided between the two of you that the roundhouse was where you'd like the new site to be?
Well, as far as the city of Marquette goes, we decided a long time ago, we thought that this is the site where it should be. I can't answer for Jeff, but the agreement itself was not finalized until the very end of last week, but when they decided it was the appropriate site.
Sure. Well, I'll say this. This has always been our preferred site, and we have had several locations we're looking at. Our first priority is to our patients. Our second is making sure that we continue to maintain the role of Marquette General Hospital has played in this community. But the last few weeks have really been about trying to get the last parts of this worked out, and we're just glad to be here today. Thank you.
So, is proximity to the city the main reason it wanted to move the town show?
Well, I think, understanding the history of Duke Life Point, we, we understand what hospitals in communities like Marquette mean to the community. Our goal was not to change that. We needed to have the best location. Fortunately, it's, it's great that we could continue to be right here in the gateway to the city and, and be in the best location. But we did not want to change the role that Marquette has played in the city, but we had to weigh out all the options and understand what was best for the patients, and I guess you just call it a win-win.
What is the estimated project timeline as far as construction for the new facility and all of the road construction that will have going on?
I'll let people, the city, speak to the, to the road construction. As for the medical campus, we've already started design work. We're going to hopefully very soon be able to take some design options out and incorporate community feedback into finalizing the, the design for the hospital. We hope to break ground early in 2015, and with the goal of moving in, in 2017, probably in the third or fourth quarter of 2017.
I don't know if we have Bill Vida here. I guess we don't. But, but certainly, our, our goal would be to, to get those projects done in time for the new hospital. But, you know, these are all things, as we've pointed out before, this is, this is really the first step. It's an important step, but there are many details that have to be worked out before this can be finalized. And we actually have a contract, but things like when the roads get built and when things change, hopefully, we're all on the same timetable. But, you know, we'll, we'll have more on that in the future.
You know, the big part of this is the Brownfield Tiff District, and that'll probably take about three months, maybe six months. We have to go to get the state to buy in on that. But our engineers will be starting designing it, and hopefully, you know, construction on the, on the new, new roundabout, the, the bridge can, can start in the next construction season. It won't start in this construction season, but I think concurrently, those things will be taking place, and certainly will be on, those will be on schedule. We can't, we're not going to hold up the parade just for, for a few road improvements. We'll get them done in a timely manner. We've got the staff, we've got a very capable staff, a very capable engineering department will probably supplement that with, with probably some consulting engineers because they, they have the, the whole city to deal with, and, and we'll do what we need to do to get the job done, so.
Anybody else?
I don't know how many jobs are we expecting this to be, once the hospital was in place?
I'm trying to think.
From construction job, they said a couple hundred construction jobs for sure would be created.
Yeah, I'll let Ed answer.
I think from the construction standpoint, we're looking at a couple hundred construction jobs that'll be going on for over two years as the hospital's being built. From engineering architect, there's a lot of local firms here that are being included in that. Once the hospital opens, we're going to be able to provide a lot of specialized services. So, we're looking at, you know, hiring physicians, and along with the physicians, we usually hire two or three office staff. So, as those physicians come in, those practices will probably look at, you know, additional staff as, as more physicians come to the community and in the hospital as we provide those additional services. So, we'll see growth on both the construction and then once the hospital opens.
As far as the old site goes, can anybody give a statement on that?
Sure.
We'll go after Jeff. It's their building.
You know, we, we have some thoughts. I think other people in the community have some thoughts, but what was clear is that we needed to make this decision first, so everyone could understand the economic impact of where the new hospital was going. I think that becomes our new job, in addition to getting this hospital and this medical campus built, is to begin those discussions in the community to make sure we find the right alternative views for the current site.
This action really sets a lot of wheels in motion. You know, this, this is what makes it all begin. Certainly, we have to look as a city at what we're going to do now to replace the municipal service center. And, you know, we've thought about it, we've given it some study, but we haven't developed plans yet. You know, until this, until you actually get to the point where something is definitely going to happen, you don't expend a lot of effort on that half, on that behalf. And I'm sure that's the same with, with Duke Life Point. But certainly, as a city, we're concerned, and we want that, that building not to wind up, as someone pointed out, like the old orphanage in Marquette. And that's one of the questions get, that we often get. And I, with a company like Duke Life Point, I don't see that happening. I think positive things will happen with the, with the properties out there. Anybody else? Pretty easy.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. Good job.
Thanks.
Good to see you again. Mayor? Good day.